Welcome everyone. This meeting will be held in accordance with California Government Code Section 59453, subdivision of the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code Section 54950, Series Resolution Number 202271, and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. While this meeting will physically open to the public, given the state of emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19, members of the public may also participate and comment via the application Zoom. Zoom information was posted on the agenda. And welcome everyone to our regular city council meeting today, Monday, September 12th, 2022. I now call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
District one, Councilmember Casey.
Here.
District two vacant. District four, Councilmember Klein.
Here.
District three, Vice Mayor Silvera.
There.
Mayor Lopez.
Here. And today's invocation is by Pastor Jim Janiosi, Big Valley Grace Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody, please stand.
Mayor Lopez and City Council in the city. Before I begin, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for the great work you did a couple of weeks ago and bringing our community together for that parade and just recognizing the schools and everything. I know it took a lot of work. And as a member of the community, I just want to say thank you. It was a great, great day for all of us. But thank you for your work. Father, thank you. Thank you to you who have such a great city like this that we can live in. One that has ups and downs and problems and difficulties, but one where there's people who care about one another, people who strive to do better for one another. We thank you for that. Thank you for each man and woman who stands here today seeking to serve and to give themselves for that betterment. And so, Lord, we ask you to protect this place. We ask you to look after it. You give our council and all the leadership of this city just great wisdom and understanding, insight, and that they would continue to increase in their care for one another. So, Lord, may your hand be on this meeting today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Today, we have a presentation by the Americans Foundation of Suicide Prevention, followed by Suicide Awareness Week proclamation. Barbara, are you here? She will be doing the presentation today. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you. My name is Barbara Pierce Kiesa, and it's an honor to be here today to talk about suicide prevention in Stanislaus County. The biggest fundraiser of the year for suicide prevention locally is Saturday, October the 22nd. It happens in Modesto. It's a 13th annual walk. So, starting with that, I'd like to talk just a little bit about the chapter. We've had a chapter since 2015. In 1987, a group of grieving parents got together with some researchers and they decided to found a foundation dedicated to research and dedicated to helping families like theirs. The years since, that small group of people has spread across the country, and there are now chapters in all 50 states. The main goal is, of course, suicide prevention to raise awareness about mental health, but also to support the families that have been affected by suicide loss. We have a couple of main goals, as outlined up there. As outlined up there, the main, there's sort of five main things. One is to fund research, and the way that we get involved with that on a local level is, as I mentioned, the annual walk. More importantly to us is education about suicide prevention. And so, what we do, we offer a 45-minute free presentation called Talk Save Lives. It's community education, basically suicide prevention 101. I'm retired now, but my, but my background is mental health. I spent 33 years working for Stan County, and it's as good a 45-minute presentation at a community level as you can find, research-based. We've been offering that presentation in this community from about 2010 on. We've spoken at drug treatment centers, Oakdale School, Oakdale Junior High and High School, senior centers, many businesses that have actually been affected by a suicide loss of an employee. That's usually the time that organizations reach out to us. So, that is something that is available to the Series community as well. This, the other thing that we do is public advocacy, and that's on a state and national level. We attend an annual Day at the Capitol lobbying, advocating for suicide prevention, as well as an annual convention in Washington DC. And so, many local people, many local volunteers, we're all volunteers, have traveled to both of those places to talk about what's happening in our community. Probably the piece that's most dear to me is the suicide loss support, the suicide loss family support. And how that shows up locally is we host an annual International Survivors of Suicide Loss Day, and we've been doing that since 2010. And it is a free morning, the Saturday before Thanksgiving of every year. It's held across the country and now across the world, same day, the same morning, to honor the memories of people that we've lost. The other thing that we've done in the short time that we've had a chapter is, is helped get training for people, and we now have a monthly suicide loss support group. It's the only one in Stanislaus County. The closest support group similar to this would be in Sacramento. We felt like it was really important to have these kinds of things available locally. So, the national organization is headquartered in New York, as I mentioned, and then the public policy arm is headquartered in Washington DC. We, it took us five years to get a chapter here in Modesto. 2015, we were finally chartered. And unfortunately, we thought we were getting Stanislaus and San Joaquin and Toolumne, sort of the neighboring group, but they went ahead and gave us 14 counties. So, we now actually represent Stanislaus, San Joaquin, all the way down to Bakersfield. But the hub is here, the heart is here. All the board members are from communities in Stanislaus County. We have board members from Modesto, from Riverbank, from Salida, from Waterford. We would love a board member from Series. So, that's it about sort of the chapter and what we're doing and what we do locally. Quickly, the latest data from the CDC around the country was in 2020. You know, that's the latest data that we have now. And in the United States, suicide is the 12th leading cause of death in this country. In 2020, we lost 45,979 people to suicide, and we had 1.20 million suicide attempts. That's, that's on the national level in 2020. In California, suicide is the 14th leading cause of death. In 2020, we had 44,144 cases that were documented. Suicide is a lot, is similar to some other things. It's pretty grossly unreported, actually. So, these numbers are pretty low, because in many cases, it's difficult to determine from the cause of death whether it was intentional or accidental. And most families understandably would want to believe it was accidental rather than intentional. In terms of the states, we're 44th out of 50 in terms of our suicide rate. And five times as many people died by suicide in 2019 than in alcohol-related motor vehicle accidents. And in California, suicide is the third leading cause of children between the ages of 10 and 24, and the third leading cause of young adults between the ages of 25 and 34. All, you know, all, any suicide is tragic, but the fact that it's the second and third leading cause of our young is concerning. Taking it a step closer to Stanislaus County, the last known real study that the county did is based on 2016. In 2016, and it's pretty much the average, it's pretty much the average since then. There's one suicide a week in Stanislaus County, one suicide a week in Stanislaus County. It is, in 2016, more Stanislaus County residents died by suicide than by homicide. I think there's a real perception oftentimes by the public that, that, you know, that, those statistics are kind of, it's not something most people realize unless they happen to be one of those families. Suicides in Stanislaus County between 2013 and 2016, all the younger age groups, we've seen it rise, 15 to 24, 25 to 44, and 45 to 64 have all risen. In terms of gender in Stanislaus County, the breakdown is about 76% male, 24% female, ethnicity-wise, 11% Hispanic, 89% non-Hispanic. In 2014, the other number that jumps out is, in 2014, there were 725 emergency department visits with people who had attempted suicide and 234 non-fatal hospitalizations. So, anytime you get involved in a volunteer thing, usually there's a personal reason. So, my sister, our family settled in Series when I was about 11. My dad, my dad had 20 years in the military and then got on with the Stanislaus County Sheriff's Department. We made Series our home. There were three of us that are all Series High School graduates, class of '74, class of '77, and class of '81. So, my sister, who's here tonight, actually, my partner in crime, and my brother, we all graduated from Series High School. So, Series has been a home to us, a home for a long time. In 1988, we lost our mom to suicide. In 1988, you didn't really talk about suicide, and we didn't really know anybody else that this had happened to. It was, and will always be, I think, the saddest day of all of our lives. And there really wasn't much in terms of resources. The coroner encouraged us to put her death notice in another county, because legally you had to list it, but in order to not bring shame to my family, those were his words. We should post that death notice in another county, which we did. We did not have, we had a very private, small funeral, not, not even funeral, kind of a service, and basically grieved in silence, grieved in silence. Tragically, in 2011, my sister and I's younger brother died by suicide. He was 48, a wonderful person, just like my mom. The difference between 1988 and 2011, 34 years, I think, had passed, was that there were resources. And so, a few months after my brother died, I read about this walk in Modesto, and it was for people that had experienced suicide loss in their family. So, without fundraising, without thinking much about it, I just sort of bolted over to Crusada Park, not really knowing what I was gonna, what I was gonna find or see. And the year before, this, you know, I, I'm just like blown away by a lot of this, because suicide prevention in Stanislaus County pretty much started in an organized way, started in 2010. And it was started by four mothers, one a hairdresser, one a bus driver, one a business owner. And they all four tragically lost their adult sons that year. And they decided that they were going to do something about suicide in their community. So, they organized the very first walk in Modesto. 2011 was their second walk, and I went to Crusada Park, and for the first time, there were hundreds of other suicide loss families there. People were crying, people were laughing, people were hugging. There were community resources, and I think for the first time, we really felt like we weren't alone. So, that's when I started volunteering. That's when my sister started volunteering. And it has been an important part, sort of getting through what happens when a family experiences a loss of a loved one to suicide. So, in general, just to wrap things up, we always like to promote post the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, the text talk, which seems to appeal to the younger group. You know, they don't have to talk to anyone. They can just text. It's 24 hours. 911, of course, is for emergencies, but most recently, the 988 has launched, and that was an important part of advocacy that we participated in. That and getting the crisis numbers on the back of student IDs, those were both advocacy, the result of advocacy efforts. So, we always like everyone to be aware that there's help available. The walk itself, like I said, was started in 2010. This is our 13th year. One year was, well, you know, the COVID year was Zoom virtual, but this is our 12th year in person. The walk has grown. In 2019 was our largest walk. We had 1,200 people in attendance. We raised probably close to half a million dollars. The reason it was important for us to get a chapter was because if you have a chapter, the money stays local. And previous to that, with the first five walks, the money was going up to the Sacramento chapter. So, since 2015, the money has remained in this community. We have an ask as far as the walk. Attendance is down. I think that that registration is down. I think that that's from talking to other nonprofits. That's pretty kind of common right now. So, if it's something that you are interested or willing to do, please come out and join us on Saturday, October the 22nd. There is a fundraising incentive. If a walker raises $150, they get a walk t-shirt for the year. The shirts are not for sale. They're for people who are raising funds. There's a community resource fair, community hospice, all the specific groups that, and sponsors that support our walk. The other need that we have is raffle donations. If anyone was interested in helping support the cause, we could use raffle donations. Most of the people in attendance, again, will be suicide loss survivors and other people who want to support people with lived experience. I think that's it. If anyone has any questions, we've left packets for you. And most of all, I just want to say thank you. I've taken, we've taken my brother and my mother's story to Sacramento and to Washington DC, but I have to say, being able to come home and talk about them with the community that we still consider our hometown is, is very much an honor. We appreciate your, your community service. We, we appreciate your community service. This, this building is amazing. So, thank you. Thank you for, you know, working to make Series a good place to be. That's suicide prevention as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, with that, we have a proclamation today declaring September 4th through the 10th, 2022, a suicide prevention week. Whereas September 4th through 10th, 2022, is known as Suicide Prevention Week, and whereas according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, suicide is the 12th leading cause of death among Americans, and the 14th leading cause of death among individuals in California, whereas more than, more than 45,000 people have died by suicide across the United States in 2020, and whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background, and whereas all residents are encouraged to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their families, friends, and neighbors, and to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. And whereas the city of Series publicly places its full support behind those who work in the fields of mental health, education, and law enforcement, and whereas organizations such as the Americans Foundation for Suicide Prevention are dedicated to saving lives and bringing hope to those affected by suicide, the research, education, advocacy, and resources for those who have lost someone to suicide. Now, therefore, I, Javier Lopez, Mayor of the City of Series, on behalf of the City Council, Vice Mayor Brett Severa, Councilmembers Jim Casey and Mike Klein, do hereby recognize September 4th through the 10th, 2022, as Suicide Prevention Week in the City of Series, and call upon the citizens of Series to take the time to understand the importance of mental health, education, and recognize the taking care of ourselves and others, including taking care of mental health. And I would like to give this proclamation to Barbara. Is it Patricia? I'm sorry. Patricia. Citizens communication is now open. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopt the rules allowing no more than five minutes, Resolution 2007 106, for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking any action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda, unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council and the agenda items subject to the five-minute provision. Anyone wishing to address the city council must adhere to the rules of decorum. The rules of decorum are posted outside the chamber doors. We'll begin with in-person comments. We have three yellow cards today. And we'll begin with Mary. Are you here? Mary, please state your name. And before we leave, I would like to make sure that we get your information.
Hi, my name is Mary Alston. I have been here before.
Mary, could you pull down the microphone towards you just a little bit closer? There you go. Thank you.
Okay, I have been gone for three or four weeks now. But what I have been here for is the way that
Christopher, grab the timer.
That we have a neighbor that continues to build and build and build. And I just wanted to know where we were at on this, because I have been here now three different times. I think I've talked to Mr. Klein. He's been right on, I haven't been able to get hold of him the last week, but that's my fault. And anyway, I just want to know where this is going, because they are still doing their building. Permits are no permits. And I know good and well that if I throw up something across the street from them on my property, and I don't have a permit, they're going to come after me. And they're going to say, tear it down, or get rid of it, or whatever they're going to do. This is what we want you to do. This neighbor has been going through this. This is not, this is years. This is the years of building. And we can't get it tore down. The neighbors moving, my own daughter and son-in-law that live next door to them, they have moved out of Series. I am the next one to move out of Series if we cannot get something done. This is ridiculous. We can't park in front of our house. It's hardly down the road. I don't live in a multiple building zone. I live where it is one building. And something needs to be done here, because if not, then why not everybody else go and start building and getting their place the way they want it?
Thank you. I have Mike who has just pushed his button. Go ahead, Mike. Do you want to respond?
Yeah, you know, I mean, Mary, I diligently been trying to keep you up to date with what has been shared with me. And we're talking 10th Street.
Yes.
And because of, right now, from what I've learned with the city and stuff, and the city attorney can correct me, but right now, it's in, it's in litigation. So, if they're continuing to build right now, we're going to ask city staff and code enforcement to go out there and see if they've, if they've built anything else out there, because they were, they were, last I heard that they were supposed to cease all activity there. So, what I'm going to do is reach out to Chief Collins and Captain Crane and code enforcement to check the property, to see, you know, where it is and report back. Because right now, I know it's in litigation, and that's all I'm aware of. I didn't get into the nuts and bolts about it because of, I don't want to say anything that while, while it's in litigation. So, I know I do have your phone number. If I can get the chief or Captain Crane to get back to me and let me know if there's any more activity that's going on there, where we stand, and I'd be glad to get back to you. Let you say by Thursday.
I, I understand where you're coming from, too. My biggest thing, I'm not griping about the people that are in there, not at all. But I would be devastated if there's a fire there, because it's going to take a whole lot of lives. There was not one or two people living in them houses. There is multiple people there. And it's not, if there's a fire, it's over. And I would hate to think that those little babies and these little guys are in this area. They would be right in it. And that's where I'm coming from. You know, I would even, I don't want to move. I don't. Series has been my home for years. But I don't want to keep seeing others building and my neighbors, other neighbors leaving. And that's what they're doing. And thank you, every one of you.
No, and you're welcome. But, you know, last I heard that right now, that everything was supposed to cease. So, you know, we'll have PD and code enforcement to go on to see if there's, if there's any more activity there and, and stay in the course of what the city's trying to do.
When I hear from this person say, you know what, I'm doing this for the goodness of my heart, because these people need a place to live. Well, that's fine. They don't collect their rent. If you're doing it from the bottom of your heart, then hey, you're not. You're doing it for your pocketbook, and that's all you're doing it for.
Thank you, Mary. Is there anything that you need to add?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Klein, in response to, to the information provided here, a quick reminder to members of the public that while this matter is currently in litigation, any complaints about activity on properties such as this, including illegal activity or illegal construction, should be directed always to code enforcement. So, irrespective of it being currently in litigation, that information is important to staff. So, continue providing that information as any updates occur.
Thank you, Mary, once again. We have another card. Bruce? Step on up. If you can state your full name.
My name is Bruce Verones. Live here in Series. This is concerning about the dog park in Series off of Booth Road. You know, there, all of us here, we all have dogs, and we love our animals as we do our children. Anyway, what I'd like to see what the city can do is, dogs get hot and thirsty. We have water faucets, but we have no water faucets for us. When we get thirsty, there's no water for us to get. We'd like to see if the city can install some there. The other dog park, Modesto, Oakdale, and Turlock, they all have, where they can get water for the people. We also would like to know if they can have someone clean the link tools over there where you sit down and rest. A lot of dogs urinate around it. I clean it up every, every once in a while, but it gets the smelling pretty bad. If the city can come by and maybe steam clean it, get the urine. You know how it is, if you sit around the table and there's urine all over, you don't want to sit there. See if we can do something about that. And also, the handicap parking area. See if we can do something about that. And also the handicap parking area, it needs to be repainted. It's almost all gone. Like to see if we can get that done. And I know that the city can get it done. And, uh, this year was our first year. We had our, uh, annual dog fest barbecue festival. We had it across the street. Originally, we were going to have it at the dog park, but there's some people complained about it, wrote those nasty notes on the clipboard. They all know who they are, but it came out to be a real good deal. So planning to have another one for next year if the city would stand behind us to have another dog fest. And we want to have it every year and see if they can help us out with, uh, maybe supplying us with a portable restroom or something. And, uh, well, that's about it that I got to say. And, uh, we, we need more, uh, poop bags for the dogs because there's, since I've been going there, there's been probably about fifty or sixty more people that's been coming to the dog park. I go there at least two times a day. It's a place to go enjoy your animals. You know how it is when you lose your loved ones and all you got left is your animals that you love and you will take care. I really enjoy it and I want it to be one of the best parks in the whole Stanslow County. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you, Bruce. That's District Three is my district and it seems like most of the stuff you're asking for is, is very reasonable. So we'll get with the city staff and see if we can get some of that stuff done for you. And thank you for coming up and letting us know. Those of us that don't use that dog park probably don't realize what, what condition it's in. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And we do have Kimberly Aston. Welcome, Kimberly.
Um, I'm just going to piggyback off of what Bruce said, but we have, um, we really want the, uh, city council to realize that we're proud and we're thankful and grateful for the Neil Park, the Neil Dog Park. And we had our first annual dog park fest. And it was challenging because we had some dog owners who didn't want us to have it inside the gated dog park. And because we wanted to have some sense of control of our dogs and we wanted to barbecue outside the gate. But unfortunately it didn't happen. So we had to go across the street. And it turned out to be a marvelous event. So what I'm here to piggyback off of Bruce, we'd like it acknowledged as Series having a, um, their second annual dog park fest. I mean, Bruce, oh, um, having our second annual dog park fest. This was such uh, such a community event that, um, we had so many people, if you allow me, I have something. And we'd just like it announced it's because we love our pets. We love our park. Oh, thank you so much. It is the best dog park. Um, our concern lately is, um, it's not getting maintained or groomed. We were told that there was a shortage in maintenance. They do keep the park across the street for the soccer cleaned and groomed. Unfortunately, I'm ready to go get my gar- my lawnmower and mow the lawn myself at the dog park. That's how important Neil Dog Park is to me. So again, we have some water bottles. We hope that you will, um, acknowledge uh, Series' second annual dog park and that we could get the participation of the city and that it could be, even though it was safe, we had no incidents, but we didn't have a bathroom. And so, um, if maybe somehow the city could get with us for next year, it'll be in August. We're planning, we're start, we're, we are starting to plan now. I want to reiterate the community that we have at that dog park. Um, it's a love. Bruce is it, we're there twice a day. We clean up. I, I pull weeds at the park. Uh, sometimes you guys have the maintenance treated, but I personally pull weeds. Right now we can't even pick up the dog poop because the grass is too high. We understand that there may be some hiring issues that the city is hiring for maintenance workers. Um, but this park is really special to us. And, and that's why we're here, not to complain. We want to enhance it. We want to see it on Good Day Sacramento next year. We just want to make it, um, a landmark because it is, you guys have made, um, Neil Park such a wonderful place to bring our dogs in such a safe environment. We just like to continue that to be what it is. And thank you for the opportunity. And enjoy your water bottles.
Okay, thank you very much, Kimberly. Um, I would suggest you come to the community center and speak to Mr. Chavez about their dog celebration, their dog fest. And we'll try to see how that city can get involved, but honestly, I, that's my district and I've never even heard of that event. And so maybe that's on me. Um, but let's make sure if the city's going to get involved, we do it the right way and, and talk to the Parks and Rec people and, and do what we got to do. And we'll see how much we can, we can get involved with. It sounds like a great event. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
If I may make a comment. As a city councilman, I'd like to turn around and thank you because you brought a smile onto my face. Because knowing that the park is getting used the way it is, I, you know, I, I don't live in the district. Uh, but you know, it's positive things, feedback that, uh, the city, this, the city council that, uh, goes a tremendous way. So I, I just want to thank you and commend all you to go out to do that dog fest and, and, uh, make it happen. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there any members of the public that would like to speak? Please state your name.
Sheen Akeley Series. I think, uh, after hearing this lady here about dog park, uh, she might want to stop at, uh, uh, where you pay the utility bill. There's a position for street ma- maintenance operator one, uh, for twenty-nine hours a week. Who knows, they could help out at that park depending on where they deploy them. But, uh, it's open from September first, twenty, it lasts for two years, probably the ARPA funds. And that might be one of the solutions to the problem in that part. I have a part-time, part-time position for somebody in the city to field, maybe somebody in their own neighborhood. I want to thank everybody tonight that came here. Uh, I feel for that lady that, that has the issue on 10th Street. We've been hearing about this for, God, who knows how long. Probably more than two years. And still no resolve. And I do know that previous things in the city litigation and stuff can take several years before there's an end to the solution. Uh, I want to remind everybody in the public too, that, uh, like these people here that came tonight, uh, please stay and, and get involved in issues with the city so we can improve things. And, uh, again, maybe a quote from the chief, you see something, say something. Doesn't matter if it's small or big. It might grow into something else that needs to be taken care of that can get out of hand. Uh, code enforcement seems to be doing a lot better in my area. Uh, I see things that, uh, maybe most people don't see because they're at a nine-to-five job and they got to take care of their kids all the time. Uh, but there are issues out there and just like this lady, every time you look around, somebody's trying to just do whatever they want to do with construction in their home or just various different things that they think that they're, uh, because they're a homeowner, they can do what they want to on their own property. Uh, yeah, maybe out in the county you can do those things, but we need some kind of uniformity in our residential areas. And, uh, yeah, I'd like to know too about with state of California, the state of the water issue that they keep, uh, producing on television and other media forums. Why can't we have a moratorium on building? If they're so worried about water and they're going to build a reservoir somewhere, somewhere in the state to help with water flow or water consumption, uh, why are we still building homes and businesses in town? Because that's just takes the water away from the people that here have been here for quite a while. Uh, is there, I'd like to know if there's some kind of state law or, or county law that says we can't do that? That we could put a two-year stop on things, uh, before we start issuing, uh, permits and stuff for building. Uh, not denying them the right to build, but just putting a hold on it until this water issue makes some headway in the state or the county. All right, thank you.
Any other members of the public that would like to speak? Seeing none. Any members on Zoom? I see one hand.
Alvaro Zuniga, your mic is muted.
Hello, Alvaro Zuniga. I live in the Siri- city of Series. Uh, this is my first time speaking, uh, before the council. My family are longtime residents of Series. They have been living in Series for over twenty years. I moved, uh, to Series in two thousand and four. I went to Series High. Go Bulldogs. Um, the reason I'm, I'm coming before the council is, uh, number one, I want to commend you guys for, uh, continuing to have these meetings available online. Um, it's definitely helps me when I can't go. It allows me to keep you guys accountable and vice versa for, for me not going to, to the uh, so I hope that these meetings continue. Uh, my second point is regarding, uh, recycling. I want to echo the sentiment that I've heard before. I live alone here with my wife. We, we purchased our home here in April. It's just her and I and our baby girl who was born in July. And I think recycling is just not enough. That tiny can is, uh, always filled up for me and I, uh, every other city that I've ever lived in, uh, always came and picked up, uh, the trash on a, on a certain day on a weekly basis. So I don't know why Series is the exception. I think people here want to recycle just as much. So I hope, uh, that, that you guys allow us to, to do that. And then my last, uh, my last point is regarding the ARPA funds. Um, I know there's, uh, about four million or so dollars available, uh, for, for, to spend. And I wanted to just throw out an idea that, uh, Series is, is due for a, uh, locally renowned, uh, building, uh, that, uh, can be used for indoor sports. Uh, like I said, I, I moved in here a long time ago and I played soccer outdoors for, for Series High during the summer. And I can tell you it's, it's, it's rough. I know, uh, Councilmember Klein has a daughter and, uh, you guys, uh, have expressed that, uh, parks and is a, is a, is a, is a priority for you guys? So I hope that, you know, you consider the four million and, uh, you know, really big, big, uh, uh, structure or building for the houses, uh, indoor sports like basketball, soccer, indoor soccer or volleyball or, or anything else that can revenue, uh, and generate revenue for the, for the county, uh, or for the city. I'm sorry. And then that, that, that's, that's all I have for, for today. And thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak online.
Thank you very much. Is that the last and only hand on Zoom?
There's no other hands raised on Zoom.
No emails? Okay. Citizen communication is now closed. There's no appointments or boards. Uh, anyone on the city council would like to declare a conflict of interest?
That's true.
Seeing none?
We need more recycling.
Alvarado, if you can mute your mic. Thank you. Okay, uh, just wanted to announce that, uh, note that there is a correction to the notice of the completion of item number nine. The correction date of the section one is November eighth, twenty twenty-one. And for the section two, the regular city council meeting date is September twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Moving on to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted on a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, a recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon one roll call vote. Is there anybody on the council that would like a consent item pulled for further discussion?
Number eight.
Number eight. Is there any members of the public that would like to pull an item? Anybody on Zoom?
No members. Their hands raised on Zoom.
Seeing none? For promotion?
Move to approve consent calendar one through seven and number nine.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Passes four zero.
Item number eight, resolution number twenty twenty-two, one twenty, authorizing city manager to approve a purchase order and authorizing a ten percent contingency with TruTech Roofing for the re-roofing City Hall and American Legion Hall in the city of Series. Mr. Casey?
I, I, I pulled item because, uh, the last couple of sessions we've worked on thing, we've only had bids for a couple of different parties. I'm a local business person and I think it's very important that we support local business. Stanislas County, Merced, San Joaquin. But projects large, I, I believe there's an avenue to, to put it out to statewide people. We owe an obligation to support our local businesses. But at the same time, we owe an obligation, citizens, to get the best deal. That's why I pulled it.
Thank you. Do you have any additional questions to staff or? Okay. Any members of the public that have any questions in regard to this item? Warren?
Good evening, council members. John Warren, City of Series. Question, I do believe that the City Hall and the American Legion do need, uh, taken care of and maintained. Um, there were four companies, I think, that the city reached out to. Um, and they received a response from two. Does the city reach out to the companies that did not respond and ever seek a question or ask them why they didn't? And maybe encourage them to come and to, to participate in the bidding process? Do you ever do that? Does there's ever reach out to a company that did not respond when they reached out to them to begin with?
Mr. Mayor, do you want to test it back? Yes, uh, Mr. Warren, the, uh, we had four, we requested four bids from, uh, I believe from TruTech Roofing, uh, Kings Roofing, Joaquin Roofing, and the Hart Roofing. We did reach out to Joa- uh, to Joaquin Roofing and the Hart. And they were non-responsible and, uh, they could not meet with the prevailing wages. So that's why they decided not to, uh, uh, not to submit their bids.
Do we ever go out to San Joaquin County, Merced County? And put this information out to other localities so that they know there's an opportunity to come here? Because I know Landris Roofing is right there in Ripon. They re-roofed my home several years ago, quite a few. But there are other companies out there. I mean, a hundred thousand dollars or a hundred and five seems a bit high. But I know building materials and all that stuff has just gone through the roof. But it was just a question I had. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Klein has his button pushed.
Well, you know, if I, if I may, because you know, Councilmember Casey brought this up. Sam, can you enlighten the council and, and the city and the audience on the process of sending this stuff out to bid? Because I know a few years ago, the council, we decided to talk about this and give like, you know, a five percent preferential for, uh, local businesses and, and, and whatnot. And the response was still somewhat on the low side back then. So, you know, can you just give us a scenario or, or process that you go through to send this out to bid fleet?
Yes, Mr. Klein, uh, this process happened to be, uh, provided by our facility staff. They did the reach out to the four companies, uh, four roofing companies to, uh, to give us a proposal. However, um, like I said, I mentioned before, uh, there were two companies that they decided not to because of the prevailing wages. They weren't able to meet it. And also, uh, we do request, uh, a performance bond to be part of this, uh, uh, you know, part of their proposal. So, uh, some companies, they can't afford to, uh, to have the prevailing bond, uh, performance bond, uh, provided. So they would decide not to, uh, you know, not, not to bid it. So, uh, but we did reach out to four and we could reach out to more. We, we had, uh, you know, and that's, I mean, I mean, we're, we're doing our job trying to reach out to others. But no one wants to bid, maybe because they're so busy. And, uh, and that's all I have.
So my question is, why did you only reach out to four? Is it? Is it, is there a, is there a state list that you can reach out to? Or can you reach out, could you have reached out to 10?
We, we could have, this was done informally. So we, 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 you know, trying to reach out to minimum of three. Uh, so our facility staff reached out to four. I think that would be adequate number and, and.
So my next question is because the weather and stuff like that, it's not a crucial thing right now. Can we? I'm going to ask you, can we just reach out and, and see if you can get four to six other, reach out to four to six other contractors?
Most likely we could do it like a formal bid. We could have it done with plans and specs and get that out and, and publish it in the newspaper and, and post it on the website and, you know, trying to make it a formal bid.
Okay, so there we go right there. So the process is you make contact with those four or you just put it in a, in a newspaper or on your website that you're looking for bids? See, that's what I'm trying to find out. Do you just contact the four or do you set that, you know, on a website? Do a state website? How do you reach out to get these four bids?
Well, I, I can't speak for the facility staff, but I, I, you know, they've done businesses with them before. So that's why they, they reached out to, uh, to the, to the four roofing companies.
Okay, that's, 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 that's.
Yes, I just received a question from Vice Mayor Silvera. There are procurement requirements under the municipal code depending on the value of first, if it's a service, if it's a product, if it's depending on what it is that the city is looking to contract for. Um, and then triggers based off of amounts. And so there's informal bid process, the formal bid process. And so for the most part, for these types of services, you're looking at repair type work. You can go through more informal, but there is a formal process that, that can be followed. And once in that, um, process, then there's certain triggers. So it has to be noticed, it has to be published. You have to provide a certain amount of time. There's more formality to it, but there is a process that, that staff can follow. Again, just depending on the needs and whether it meets those requirements in the procurement or in the procurement code.
Now, obviously, if you were to do it more formally like that, it would create more time, probably cost and all of that to go along with it, correct?
Yes, so it's, 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 um, it is codified. And so there's certain requirements associated with the noticing and publication requirements.
So if I may, may say something that with us accepting these formal bids, okay? And with the council, let's say the council turns around and rejects the bids or asks to go out and reach, get more. This is, this opens opportunity for one or two other vendors to undercut what they've already done. So this process to me, and I'm a salesman, would not do justice with the process we went through. Because we're opening up a floodgate for somebody to turn around and say, well, this is what they bid on because it's published. Now I can undercut them by $10,000 or whatever. So it basically, it undercuts the process of equality and everybody getting the same opportunity. So I think it's a bad suggestion, and I'm, I'm going to say this, to say, let's reject it. Let's open it up for four more weeks and let's see if we can get some other bids because that undercuts the process and gives somebody an opportunity to, to basically undercut because what's published.
It's a possibility. In, in addition to that, it slows the process down depending on how critical it is for the work to get done within a certain timeframe. And in addition to that, you may have the bidders who already submitted, say, I'm, I'm not interested anymore and maybe withdraw and you end up starting from scratch with nothing.
So, okay, so what I'm going to say is I can support item number eight. Okay, I'll say that right now, I can support item number eight. But in the future, I would like to see, uh, a little bit more of an, uh, of an open bidding process instead of just the three or four that have done business with the city in the past. I would like to see it opened up where it is to anybody that wants to bid it, how you put it. The process can, might be a little bit longer, but to make it fair and equitable for other companies. I think that we need to just get away from being blinded by, these are the ones we've always done business with. Let's just go to reach out to them. We need to open it up to a broader specter. But to be fair with the, the ones that we do have the bid and, and the competitiveness that they've had. And I mean, there's a, there's a big discrepancy here. I mean, you're looking at, you know, $60,000 difference in, in bids are. So with that being said, I can support item number eight. Moving forward, I would like to see the, the city staff do a little bit different and broader bidding process.
Um, so if, just for my own sanity, I support this project also. And since all of the, the rest of it, the bidding process is not a genderized item that we can't really talk about or take an action on, I would ask the city staff to bring back the bid process at a later date for us to examine if we want to make a change or not.
I just wanted to add to that, just maybe it's best that we give the staff criteria on what do, whether it's something that's, if it's a project that's needed right away versus a law, a project that we need to put out to bid. Cause if we don't give you guys a criteria, or at least you guys tell us what, what is needed, then we're just going to go back and forth. So I, I agree with you both gentlemen.
The criteria is already set. We just got to look at it to see if we're okay with it still from whenever determined in the past.
If that is the case, then I guess yes, bring that forward, please.
In the meantime, I'm going to approve number eight on the consent calendar.
What'd you say?
Oh, he, he made a motion.
Well, Mr. Casey.
You're going to say something, Mr.?
I, I would say that, uh, this, this afternoon, you know, I reviewed further actually approved this, this 22nd. And, and so kind of shame on us not to maybe taking a better look at it. I think it's, again, I, I'm a local business person. I think that somebody in Siri's deserves to get to business. But there needs to be responsibility to us to spend the citizens of Siri's wisely. I'm, you know, I, I'm in the business. We, we receive solicitations, uh, through the state of California for bids all over the state of California. And we're fortunate enough sometimes get a bid outside of the area. But one of the local counties here, uh, that we have business in, we also have a 5% preference. In another county, we have 10% preference because we're located. I just think that we just like my fellow councilmen that need to help our staff come up with a bidding process that satisfies our needs and also protects the money our taxpayers. Thank you.
Hey, Council, Vice Mayor, you had a motion on the table?
Yeah.
I'll second that motion. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Asses four zero.
Okay, there's no unfinished business, no public hearing, no new business, no discussion items. Is there any council member referrals?
Nothing.
I don't have much to report. Council members, anything to report? City manager, anything to report?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Dubia?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Apartment heads, anything to report? Go right ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Engineering Department has got an exciting grant available from the Stancoag ATP Cycle Six. And I just wanted to take a second to explain, uh, our options. Potentially, we could look at a project that could connect the existing pathways with new ATP street improvements to, from the downtown to the entrance of the River Bluff Regional Park. Uh, we would further look to add additional ATP pedestrian bicycle paths and, uh, inside the park, uh, to provide access to both upper and lower park. The Recreation Department has offered to put out a survey to, um, secure public feedback on their Facebook account, uh, in the coming weeks to, uh, allow us to see what kind of interest there was in this grant. The grant is a full, uh, full funding grant if we stay within the guidelines. And so, uh, the engineering staff will report back to council the results of the survey and apply. And we'll be able to seek guidance in October as to whether we should proceed with the application or not.
Thank you for that information. It would be very great if you all received an email on that update soon as you.
One question, is that, or any matching funds required for that grant?
Because a hundred percent.
If we stay within the guidelines, it could be conceivably a hundred percent financing with up to one to two, three million dollars.
Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you for all that. Go ahead, Chief.
Just wanted to take a moment and let everybody know that today is National Policewoman's Day. So just to say thank you to our female officers that we have working for us hard, unity, and also to the female officers who do the same thing nationwide.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody else? I know the county supervisor is online. Is there any comments? And is raised.
Your mic is unmuted.
Good morning or good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is Russ Fowler, Supervisor, Chance Condon's office. Supervisor apologizes he can't be here, but has another commitment. So he asked me to join you instead. Uh, just two pieces of news I want to pass along. Supervisor, as well as myself, we're happy to join the Siri's Police Department at their swearing in for both A shift and B shift. It's great to see the men and women that make up our department, our community have such a great night. And we want to thank the Siri's Police Department for putting on such a good show and being good hosts. And secondly, supervisor was happy to attend the, uh, Veterans of Foreign Wars and the American Legion, uh, Remembrance of 9/11 this Sunday and thank them for the effort they put in on that program, taking time out to remember such an important event. With that being said, I'm happy to take any comments, questions or concerns.
Seeing none, thank you very much, Russ. I appreciate it.
Have a good night, guys.
Good night. And with that, this meeting is now adjourned. God bless everyone.